...supervisors to order and also call the meeting of the broadband authority to order. For the same people, just for the public's knowledge. And we're going to open this meeting with a moment of silence. And if you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. This is the biggest crowd we've seen since maybe the entire year. I think you might know why. Anyway, the first item on the agenda here is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Hiss?
Yeah, there's no additions. Just want to make sure it's clarified. I think it might be in the printed amended version of the agenda, but at least on the old agenda, there's one, a public hearing. It's the public hearing for consideration, citizen request and text amendment for off-street parking, construction standards for conference center uses. So that was put in the public hearing section by error, and that will be, that would need to be moved to an action item. And I think on the amended agenda, we had moved that to item AA. So it'd be the first action item. So that's just one, just for clarification purposes, we need to make that change.
All right. I was also instructed prior to the meeting that we needed to change the order of the public hearing and presentations for items 8C and 8D.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we'll do 8D as 8C and then 8C as 8D. That's okay? All right. And then, Mr. Davis, you said you had, you had a board member comment.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Any other changes to be added?
Mr. Chairman, do we still need a closed session?
Oh, I do not believe we do now, so we can remove the closed session because we already had that earlier tonight. Anything else? All right. We'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All right. You've heard the motion from Mrs. Parker to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carried. Next, we have citizen comment period. This is a 15-minute citizen comment period. This would not be, I understand we have some people who have signed up for item 8A. That's, so this is not that time, but if there's any other general comments from the citizenry, this is the time to do that. All right. Seeing none, I'll close the, oh, go ahead. When you come up, if you can just state your name, where you live, and.
My name is Jerry Akers. I live at 111 Otterview Road in Forest, and I'm coming before you today to ask you to help us as citizens. On March 12th, Governor Northam declared a state emergency in Virginia due to the COVID-19. During his announcement, he stated, "We must make sure Virginians stay safe and healthy." The common mantra during that time was, "Just give us 15 days so we can flatten the curve." And now here we are, 102 days later, June 22nd, and our governor still has us in a state of emergency. As of June 19th, there were 1,600 reported COVID-19 deaths. Based on historical rates, just some other numbers for perspective, during the same time that we lost 1,600 citizens, Virginia abortion mills murdered 3,600 babies. We lost typically 3,700 to cancer and 980 to accidents. Also historically, Virginia averages 1,300 deaths annually due to the flu, closely matching our COVID-19 deaths. Bedford County has thankfully only had two deaths from COVID-19. And I give you those numbers just for perspective, it doesn't seem to me that we're in a pandemic or in an emergency, but here we are still in a state of emergency. Last week, Governor Northam's recent press conference, he said, "We must continue to be safe," but his arbitrary and capricious definitions of safe and health is destroying our lives and our livelihoods. We're locked in a state of emergency until he decides we're safe enough. It is legislatures that hold the power to create the law, not the executive. Governor Northam, at each COVID-19 press conference, writes new laws and executive orders for us to follow. 102 days into COVID-19, we're still operating where Governor Northam tells us what to do. Our nation revolted from the King of England because we wanted to rule ourselves. We instituted the republican form of government, but Governor Northam is using the emergency powers given clearly intended for temporary pressures such as hurricanes or earthquakes. But we're on day 102 of emergency powers. This is not a republican form of government. We have written Senator Newman and Delegate Byron to help do something with this tyranny, and they both were back and said they're powerless because they're in the minority right now and haven't been called back into session. Until our General Assembly is called back into session, we are stuck under the tyranny of one man, whatever he decides. So we're here appealing to you to help us, you as the lesser magistrates. We're asking you to free us from this tyranny, just like you declared you would stand against unconstitutional Second Amendment overreaches. We're asking you to stand in a similar way. There are many options. You could collaborate with other counties and petition the governor to recall the General Assembly and set up proper legislative guidance for the governor to follow, or collaborate with other counties and tell the governor you are no longer implementing his guidelines, or tell the governor you are on your own and you're no longer following or implementing his guidelines. In other states, the governors have been sued for their executive overreach, so that's another option. Bedford County leaders should decide how Bedford County operates, not the governor. So that is our appeal to you is, we're all being told what to do by one man who's not, has no legislative guidance to follow, and I don't think that's right. And there seems to be no end to it. So that's our appeal to you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Akers, I think you're in my district, Otterview.
Yes, sir.
Where do you vote?
111, Otterview Road.
No, where do you vote?
Upper End.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you're definitely in my district. You're off the effort.
Yes.
If you could give me your phone number, I'd like to talk to you at a later time.
Great. I will.
Next, we have the, what, do we have anyone else? All right. I'm going to close the citizen comment period and move on to the consent agenda. This is a, we have one item, a consideration of a resolution appropriating fiscal year 2020 receipts, resolution R.062220-01. Robert?
Yeah. Essentially, this is, we have a few accounts that have earned interest over, very little interest, but interest nonetheless, over the past fiscal year, and this is just reallocating those interest earnings so then they can be appropriated and spent if needed out of those accounts.
Mr. Chairman? Yes? I move we approve resolution R.062220-01. All right. You've heard the motion from Mr. Johnson. Because it's involving money, I think we have to take a whole vote.
Do we have a discussion?
Oh, any discussion on this?
I don't see all interest. Am I missing something? Do I see something, things about seizure?
I think the second paragraph says, talks about received and unappropriated amounts listed below plus additional receipts and interest received on or before. So it's really interest accrued to date and then any other interest that's going to be received between now and the end of the month.
Well, there's some state forfeited assets, I think is what she's, she's referring to.
Is that a sheriff's department?
Yeah, most of these are from, from the sheriff's department or they're items associated with the court, but both of them would be through the sheriff's department.
Do we have any information about, I'm pretty much a personal property kind of person. I'd like to know if we're seizing someone's assets with the whole deal. Is that too much to ask, or it seems like a pretty big number there?
I don't have any other information than what's on here.
Our sheriff's here is here.
Yeah, I don't know if it's on.
Nearly $12,000. I'd like to know what we're seizing.
Well, what has been seized. I mean, it's, it's really, again, this is really an accounting mechanism here to appropriate what has been either received throughout the fiscal year and also the interest that's been earned and just allowing those to be appropriated into these various funds.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. If it's, if this isn't unanimous, then this needs to be moved to something other than the consent agenda. Consent agenda has to be unanimous. So if anyone's entertaining not voting for this, then we need to make this a action item.
I just don't know how I can say yes when I don't know. I just thought I needed more information. If we're seizing $12,000 from citizenry, I'd like to know more information about it, but, and then put it in our budget. Is that unreasonable? You guys tell me. If we're putting money that's been seized into our budget, I would just like to know more information about it. But I could pass. I mean, if you guys are all going to pass it, can I just say, can I just pass?
Let's just put it on as a first action item. We'll do that, and then we can have further discussion. Okay? Next, we have the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we approve, I've read through them all, the amendments for March 9, minutes for March 9, 16, and 23, April 6 and 7.
27. April 6 and April 27.
That's right.
Okay. Any other discussion on those?
There was one change that's been made to it, for that change.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes from March 9, 16, 23, April 6, and April 27, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next, we have public hearings and presentations. First item is item 8A, public hearing, consideration of a resolution to approve special use permit, SU 19-0001. This is to establish a conference center use, conference center use on parcels identified as tax map numbers 16-2-2, 16-2-3, and 16-A-4A, better zone AP agricultural rural preserve. All right? Looking for the staff presentation. Looks like the staff presentation will be by Jordan Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, my name is Jordan Mitchell with the Division of Planning. He's presenting special use permit application, SU 19-0001. The applicant owner for this project is Kenneth and Jennifer Misana. There are three properties associated with this application, tax map numbers 16-2-2, 16-2-3, and 16-A-4A. Properties located off of Camden Road. Keep some adjoining addresses there, 2766 and 2640 Camden Road. It's approximately one mile from Allen Highway. Size of the properties in total are 46.15 acres. Current zoning is AP Agricultural Rural Preserve, and they're requesting a conference center use, which is a wedding venue, located in election district number five. And here is the location map of the three properties in question. And here is the zoning map showing everything around the property, be zoned AP, do see the corridor overlay district along Route 122 North. Feature land use map has the property's agricultural natural resource stewardship, which would be in tune with the current zoning of the property. And here is a aerial photograph taken the site in 2018. Not a whole lot of difference there now, other than maybe some trees have been cut down along the entrance, too. Looks like maybe some exploratory interests into the site to do some preliminary work, logging operations, well. Here is the concept plan. You have a log, you have a cabin, you have the event center, and you have associated parking in both. Under your prior actions, the planning commission held a public hearing for this special use permit application on January 14, 2020. A decision on the application was tabled by a six to zero vote. They requested staff to work with the applicant to develop conditions to address the concerns of the public that were brought to their attention that evening, and staff worked with the applicant and brought revised conditions back to the planning commission on February 18, 2020. And by a vote of six to zero, the planning commission recommended the following conditions and approval of this application. Number one, section 30-85-12.5, general standard shall apply in perpetuity until the conference center use has been discontinued. Two, the facilities will be utilized as a wedding venue primarily, but also host parties for birthdays and office gatherings. Three, the hours of operation for the wedding activities, including preparation, are Fridays 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturdays 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sundays 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Staffs permitted to stay one hour after the events for cleanup activities. Staff will work from Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., as needed for meetings and tours of the site for prospective customers, office parties, and birthday events. Four, the reception area will be enclosed portion of the building. The building will have insulated glass along the materials of stone and brick that will help with sound. It will not be a metal building or open pole borne for the reception area. Any bands and music for the reception will be indoors. The wedding area will be an open area for weddings and spectators. The outdoor music associated with the wedding would be at low volume in nature and is customary for weddings. Lighting along the entry road and the parking lot will be ornamental lighting with nighttime dark sky fixtures. Maximum height will be 14 feet versus 25 feet as allowed by the ordinance. Pathway lighting and exterior building lighting will also use dark skies fixtures with bollard and sconce fixtures. The pathway lighting will be restricted to fixture, with two fixtures less than four feet in height. The wedding venue reception area would limit to 200 guests. Prior to the site plan being submitted, the boundary will be surveyed and include the area of the access road. If the old hall road that was constructed during the previous temporary activities crosses the property line and no easement there is there granted, then the access road will be shifted onto the site's property. The hall road will be improved with a stone gravel bedding minimum of six inches for adequate access. And number eight, pond shown in the front of the lodging area will be designed and approved through proper Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Environmental Quality permitting. Do you have any questions I can answer from a planning and zoning perspective?
You said that it was tabled, but I didn't recall. What was the final resolution?
The vote on it both times was six to zero to approve with those conditions as I presented. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Any other questions?
Yeah. How many parking spaces are you going to have there?
Oops. Trent, do you have any offhand?
70-some, I believe. Having grown up actively involved in agriculture and a pretty good understanding of farming, how does a conference center fit into the, I'm not a, I don't understand zoning, how does that fit into agriculture?
What I would say is, is that it's a use that people are using the scenic beauty of the county, that agriculture is part of that. The comprehensive plan that we have also represents preserving the scenic beauty of the county, and this is one way that people can utilize that scenic beauty to, you know, provide a product or something for the general public to want to utilize. Doesn't really have a whole lot to do with agriculture per se, but it certainly is something that the ordinance sees as something that's required a special use permit because it could fit and it may not fit, it's just depending upon.
I grew up out there, actually, and I've never known a road that was more crooked than Camden Road and impassable.
Sure. What I will say with the roadway is that we did have a meeting with VDOT prior to bringing the application to the planning commission, and VDOT did not express any real concerns. I've been down the road, I drove both ends of it, and it's really windy, I understand. There's, we do have some other wedding venues, Glass Hill Wedding Venues, probably in, I would say probably a little bit crazier shade or worse shade than this one, but not quite as windy, but certainly it's a dirt road, cross a couple strange bridge points on that road as well. That was a concern when that one was approved as well.
Jordan, how much traffic is going to be on this road when there's not an event? Will the place be used at all when it's not a wedding or a party or a function during these hours from Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
To my knowledge, no. The applicant does going to have, is going to have prospective people that want to come out and take a look at the venue and so forth, but other than that, there is no other proposed use other than the, you know, the people there maintaining the property and setting up viewings, I guess you would say, to set up wedding sites.
And I guess my other question or point would be that, you know, the hours Friday, 4 to 10, and Saturday, 11 a.m. to 10, that puts one hour cleanup at 11:00 p.m. So that, that means no, there shouldn't be any activity past 11:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday. And I, that was a big concern of the neighbors with the lights and the noise and traffic.
Yeah, and that was something that the applicant offered as part of the conditions we worked with him. Matter of fact, I think Trent pretty much wrote up the conditions that the planning people expressed some concerns over, the ones they could address. I mean, some things you really can't address, you know, the road conditions on Camden, something that you can't address with conditions. But yeah, I mean, that was one of the things that they offered, and they felt like that was adequate.
When they won't have an ABC license there, each event will have to get their own ABC license.
Correct.
So when they get the ABC license, will it be for how much of the property, or is that up to individuals? Are each individual's different?
Yeah, that's, I wonder, Trent.
Or is it all indoor, under roof, or is there a 20-foot perimeter?
Typically, we get the ABC permits there for the event, so I would assume wherever that event's taking place, it would be for that. But I've never seen one defined in areas in the point.
As Mr. Davis talked about that road, that's a scary feeling to meet somebody coming from one of those events on that road at 11:00 p.m.
Yeah, that was the.
I'm going to bring up something that I probably shouldn't, but it's to the public. You know, I can't imagine, having grown up out there and lived there for 15 years of my life, and just to go to town was a major task, and I drove back and forth, Jefferson Forest from Sedalia where I lived for two years, and another road backwards and forward. I can't imagine, and I don't mean to bring on somebody's career, but I can't imagine it being a successful project. What, I mean, and you don't want to anticipate bad business, bad things in the business side myself, but what happens if it fails? And I mean, is that good? Now, what do we do with this conference center? We had a case similar to that earlier in the year with a neighborhood and a guy who lost his property and couldn't even win it, if I may remind you. Mr. Chairman? Anyway. I realize there's no crystal ball here.
Yeah. What I would say is, is that you have the Glass Hill Wedding Venue, and I remember that hearing being, having a lot, public around that having a lot of concern. It reached far greater than the area just generally around it. We had people concerned about how people were going to get to the site because if you went down portions of the roadway going there, they were one-lane road, only gravel, dirt, and I could certainly see how you could have some issues. They were concerned about dust. But what I would say is, is that since we've approved of that, I've not received a complaint from anyone that lived around it about how it was, you know, a terrible use next door to them. I'm not aware of any traffic data that would support there being a huge uptick in accidents on Glass Hill. And the other thing I would say is, is that they're having extreme amounts of success there. So I'm not sure. I think I would have probably shared some of those same sentiments when we were reviewing that one, but contrary to those thoughts, they're doing extremely well.
I just have one more question.
More questions, Jim?
Is it, is that pretty typical to have when you're maxed out at 200 guests to have seven, 70 parking places because that's almost three persons per car? Is that, is that pretty normal?
I would say that usually for an event like this, it's one to three or one to four was about right. I mean, if you're maxing out that many guests, a lot of them will drive together, you know, you have designated drivers and so forth. The ordinance is one per four.
That's all.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next, I'll opens it, open this up, well, actually, do we hear from the, yeah, we hear from the applicant, and then we'll hear from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Trent Warner. I'm with Hurt and Profit. I'm representing Dr. Misana, who is here. His wife Jennifer is in Wisconsin right now. I'd like to say that how happy I am to be back doing this again, so it's been a long process and probably one of the longest projects so far we've had. We started in December with a submittal, and more than six months later, getting to hear this in front of you. So I'm hoping we can get this approved today and get on to getting people married. Would be great for many. To answer your question, Mr. Davis, we did, as part of the TRC process, meet with VDOT, and the thing that came up from VDOT was about the commercial entrance, so we would have to put a standard entrance into that right away. It's not saying that that road is not winding, but the use of that road of when we would be using is when many people do not. So that's why it would be allowable in that condition. If we had had numbers that would trip that kind, we would go into a widening or a realignment, but we don't have to do that with this particular use because it is so small in the use. The number of spaces that we did, and I think it was 67 is the spaces, but the number of spaces is based on what we've seen at other facilities. It's a 6,000-square-foot building, so it's not a, it's kind of a misnumber to call it a conference center. It's a 6,000-square-foot building. It's not a ginormous conference center. It's a wedding venue, and we want to keep it small and more of a cabin rustic type look. And really, when Dr. Misana approached me about the project, I was somewhat skeptical, knowing what's not allowed out there at Big Island until I visited the site. And once you visit the site, you know why you'd want to have a wedding venue there. It's just beautiful. And so I think it's going to be as successful as the others that Jordan has mentioned, and I'm happy to answer any engineering question that you have, and Dr. Misana's here to answer any kind of use questions we have.
All right. Any questions from the board for the applicant? All right. There are none. Now I'll open it up to the public for public comment. I have four people that have signed up to speak. If you haven't signed up, I'll call, I'll give you an opportunity to speak afterwards. But the first one is Byron Massey.
Thank you. My name's Byron Massey. First, I'd like to thank Tammy because I sent several notes, several emails to the board. Only one of you had enough respect to answer it. Thank you, Tammy. I was the only person. This land is agricultural reserve. That's what he bought it as. Why are we changing it? It's agricultural preserve. It's to preserve the rural part of the county. Now you're going about, you're putting a venue in there, you're putting a conference center in there, you're changing the whole complexity of it. My wife and I own a 200 acres adjacent to it. We run Angus cattle on it. We do not want the music. We do not want the noise. We do not want the lights. We want no part of this. Our cows don't want a part of it. So why is it?
This land is agricultural reserve. That's what he bought it as. Why are we changing it? It's agricultural preserve. It's to preserve the rural part of the county. Now you're going about, you're putting a venue in there, you're putting a conference center in there, you're changing the whole complexity of it. My wife and I own a 200 acres adjacent to it. We run Angus cattle on it. We do not want the music, we do not want the noise, we do not want the lights, we want no part of this. Our cows don't want a part of it. So why is it that you guys can set up here in front of us and dictate to us how we use our land by someone who doesn't even live in the county? That's not going to affect him, because he lives in a rich part of Lynchburg. I live adjacent to it. I'm going to be the one that's affected. So why are y'all forcing that on us? It's agricultural, it should stay agricultural. You are changing something that should never be changed. And you need to do what the other counties have done. Why don't you do your research? Why don't you form a committee and sue what other states have done about this? Be it Michigan, be it Iowa, you have done none of that. You said that, "Oh, I will approve it." Why don't you set up a bunch of rules and regulations to set this up? Are y'all so arrogant that you can't do it? Other counties, other states have done it. So why do you want to force this down to people that live there? As he said, this is a rural area. This has been a rural area. I grew up there. I grew up, I was born on Red Hill Road. I left there, went to college, taught in college, taught in med school for 43 years. I come back, that'll retire. And you're going to change it? You've got a fight on your hands. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Next, we have Mark Watson.
Thank you. Mark Watson, I'm 1108 Watershed Road, I'm the...if you drive into that driveway, I'm on the property right to the left of it. Appreciate you hearing me. No disrespect to this gentleman, but him not being aware of problems doesn't mean there's not a problem at the last venue site. Him not being aware of increased crime doesn't mean there wasn't increased crime. He's just not aware of it. It's nothing. Doesn't...he didn't pull out any statistics, didn't show us any information. And he's right, it is beautiful up there. It's beautiful up there because it's AG. You know, I don't know why we have zones. If you're going to stick a 77, and it's 67 parking lot space where the venue is, and 10 where the cabin is, so that's 77, correct? So it's misleading to say 67. There's not 77 parking lots for this building here to put in perspective, right? If you're not going to abide by zones, and you're going to put a commercial property, he can call it a wedding venue, call it whatever he wants. It's a convention center. And then the hours of operation, and then he says, "Well, in between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, if they want to have parties, we can have them." I don't know what that means. That's not a wedding venue. You can label it a wedding venue, but it's not a wedding venue. That would be like Mr. Massey and I coming in here and saying, "We want to put our 75 cattle in the middle of the city of Bedford. I'm sure the neighbors would love that. If you think it's a great idea, put them in your neighborhood. Put them in your neighborhood." You want 200 drunk people in your backyard, partying until 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night? I don't. Do you want people taking their garbage and throwing it into your property and killing your cows if they throw metal in there? Because if a cow eats a piece of metal, it can die. I don't want that. I didn't move in the country to bring the problems of the city with me. It's not a special use. This is a commercial property. It's a commercial property, period. The road up there, what Mr. Davis said, is horrible. If I drive my truck down that road, and another truck's coming up the other way, I'm on the brim. You add alcohol to that? You know? Noise pollution. It's going to be quiet. Come on. Be reasonable. It's not going to be quiet. The average wedding puts out 100 decibels. 100 decibels. A tractor puts out 80, okay? 100 decibels at a half-hour would cause permanent hearing damage. Look up the stats. I sent them in the last time with the county. I don't know if you even have that paperwork. I showed the stats. The average wedding venue puts out 100 decibels of noise. It's not going to be quiet. So if they're going to have 20 people staying in a cabin, right? 20 people in a cabin? That's a hotel! That's not up until 10:00 p.m. at night. They're going to be sleeping there at night, correct? They're sleeping there at night, correct? Is that what the cabins were? They're going to be sleeping there at night, they're going to be staying there. That's a hotel or motel. You don't have hotels and motels in the city of Bedford that sleep 20 people on an average night. I don't understand this. I really don't. I'm sorry I'm upset. I'm sorry Mr. Massey's upset. But we're in the country for a reason. We don't want to bring their problems to our backyard. Keep them in the city. Keep them on the main roads. Don't bring them down the side roads where the farmers are. And we won't bring our cattle in the city. We'll make a deal, okay? I won't bring my 85 cattle and send them in the middle of Bedford if you don't bring your Bedford in the middle of the county, in the middle of the AG. It's just not right. I appreciate you guys looking at this, and like I said, if you want this in your backyard, put it in your backyard, don't put it in mine.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Are there going to be cattle, like, right over the fence from the wedding?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and holes.
Our property is lined right with that road. In fact, some of my property is on that road, and I'm not given access, I can guarantee you. I will not grant access.
Are there going to be cattle on the fence lined?
Correct.
Both forms.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I recognize potential problems with that as a cattle rancher myself. Somehow, folks...
Yeah, this is a public comment.
I'm sorry.
You can have discussion afterwards.
Thank you.
Right now, we're only hearing from the public.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have to say. And I'd like to reserve the right, I know they come up, they get a rebuttal, but we never get a rebuttal. We didn't get a rebuttal last time. You know, there's been some mistruths here. Some fishing, there's some fishing numbers being thrown around. There's some speculation, there's some generalities. This is not the time for that. If you want to put a commercial property in the middle of an AG zone, you should have specifics, you know? He should have crime rates. He should not say, "I'm not aware of it. That doesn't mean anything to me. I'm not aware of a lot of things." It doesn't mean it's true. This gentleman has no experience, as far as I'm concerned, of running a wedding venue or anything of this nature. You know, you should take that in consideration. It's not going to succeed up there. It's just going to cause havoc. I appreciate your time and effort, and I apologize for my emotions, but this is very exciting for us and our neighbors. I had a petition that went around, I had 30 signatures in it. I don't know if you got it. No one wanted this thing up there.
Next, I have Denise Watson.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for giving us an opportunity to speak with you this evening and to express our concerns. I'm very thankful for that. So we're looking at a convention center going into a rural area. The last time we were here, there was something else that was on the agenda that night, and the builder was, he was denied because of the type of house that he wanted to put into another residential area, and it did not meet. His proposal of the type of house was not elevated, to have the elevated aesthetics for that residential area. And so I do think, I would ask that if you would please consider, you know, that was just aesthetics of a visual change to the neighborhood, and this is going so much more. And I just really would appreciate if you would just consider the impact that this is going to have on the area. So basically, we are considering tonight as a conference center, is what they're stating, and I do understand that they've come, and it said they're going to do certain hours and things like that. And so, but if we are having, it's 67 parking spaces, which is a lot, plus 10 parking spaces for the area where they're going to be staying overnight. So even though there's...so that is, if we're saying four to a car, we're saying under 300 people. That's a lot. There will be people staying overnight. They can say all they want that it's going to be done at 10:00. But we all know that weddings are a wonderful occasion. We are very pro-business ourselves. Marriages are great, but this, if you please consider, this is not the right place for this. There are places for these types of things. So we would like you to please consider why we are stating that this is not the appropriate place. You will be having people staying overnight, and everyone is aware that a wedding is a celebration, and it's hard to turn that back. People are getting together that haven't seen each other, relatives and friends for a while. They are going to celebrate. You know, turning that off at 10:00 or...just consider the reality versus what's on the paper, please. And the alcohol will be a consideration in all of that. That is the reality. Also want to consider, again, we've talked about the road safety, it's been talked about, but I don't know that if everyone is aware of where the driveway, where the entrance to this venue is going to be. It is directly against our property and Ms. Michelle Spinner's property. I mean, it is smack right up against that. So I understand that there's 46 acres, which on paper, that sounds like, if you put this in the middle of that, spaced it out, maybe it really would have a low impact on the area. But it is not. It is directly, that road is directly against our property and Ms. Spinner's property. All those cars going and coming during that time with alcohol on the property. Another thing that was mentioned at the last meeting was a concern for the water. All of our neighbors, including and ourselves, are all on well water. We are dependent, our house and our livestock, as well as all of our neighbors are dependent on our wells. And I know that there, it was addressed in the last meeting, and they stated that they're going to be bringing in drinking water. What wasn't addressed, though, is if you have 200 to 300 guests, we're saying four per car, correct? So four times 77, we're just under 300 people. 300 people using the restroom in that short amount of time, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Then we have, in addition to that, you have the accommodations of staying overnight. They will be utilizing the restroom facilities and shower facilities. Please, please, water is an essential resource. It is the livelihood of the farmers, and we can't just connect up to the city pipeline for water. So that is, please take that into consideration as well. Anyway, I would like to address, again, just emphasize, please look at the map, please look at the property lines, and see, it is directly against our property. And again, consider for yourself, if you would want that many people driving along your property line, which is agriculture, it will no longer be. So please take that into consideration. Thank you so much for your time and for listening.
All right. The next person that had signed up was actually Mr. Akers for the citizen comment period. So anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Just state your name and address for the record. I have the others.
My name is Wanda Massey. I live at 1712 Walls Ferry Road. And I was just going to bring up the water. We have two wells on our property, and we need those two wells to water the cows and for our own personal use. And then one of them has gone before dry, and we had to...so I'm just worried of all that water use that will be over there. And I'm really, that would be very sad if we had to put another well, and that's all. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right. And I'll close this portion of the public hearing and open it up for response from the applicant.
So my name is Kenneth Misano, and I'm the applicant. I'm going to let Mr. Trent Warner address some of the technical issues. I just want to mention that before we made an application for this wedding venue, we actually visited several of the wedding venues in Bedford County. I think I've been to almost all of them apart from one. We took into consideration the access roads to some of those places. I've been to Glass Hill, as you mentioned, it's really through the mountains, a gravel road. I've been to another wedding venue, which has one-lane roads. So I do appreciate that Camden Road is very windy, but this is in keeping with some of the other wedding venues that we have in Bedford County. The reason we selected this particular place was because of the beauty. It is a beautiful site, everyone acknowledges that. The way the passos are, as you saw on the map, we do have an access road. This road, we did not put the road there, it was there for logging purposes when I bought the property. It had been put by the loggers, and it is true that they didn't crouch on one of the neighbors' land. We plan to re-survey the access road when we put in a road. The property itself is going to be fairly centered within the 46 acres. So it won't be abating directly to most of our neighbors, but we have to reach the site, and so the road is the one which we can only use. The cabin that we had put on the plan was for the purposes of some of the guests. We do appreciate that Big Island has all these windy roads, and it is an inconvenience for many people after the wedding to leave the site. So some people, like the wedding party, they do approve, how do I say, they appreciate when there's accommodation on site, and this has been done for some of the other wedding venues. This is primarily really a wedding venue, which we anticipate to use on the weekends, not during the week. During the week, there will be staff people, there will be cleaning, maybe people who are visiting the facility. We have applied for 200 guests, and we intend to stick to 200 guests. I know people are multiplying the number of parking lots to extrapolate the numbers. We have no plans of exceeding that. The cabin is used primarily for people after the function, to spend the night, so they don't have to drive her away. We appreciate that there's no water in that place. I mean, we have to dig a well. Most of the water that will be consumed is going to be brought in for the purposes of the functions. We do, and I don't want to go into... Uh, we do, and I don't want to go into the technical details of designing, but there are water harvesting systems that can be used on places like that, so we can store water, uh, harvest water. So there are some strategies which we can use to make sure that we do not, uh, affect the water resources for our neighbors. We really hope, and hope that, um, we can be good neighbors. It's not our intention to disrupt anything. Uh, we appreciate that the people who were there before us went there for the solitude, and we do appreciate that. Uh, this is a beautiful site that we are hoping to share with other people to promote the beauty of the county. Uh, we're not doing this for any selfish, selfish purposes, are we? It's just a beautiful site, and let, uh, Mr. Warner make any other comments. Thank you very much.
I have a question. What do you need to like for a phone call?
So, um, the purpose of that would just be for beauty purposes, that's all. When people at sites of weddings, um, one of the biggest things that people look for are photo opportunities where they can take their pictures and, uh, for the wedding party. So that, this is just aesthetics. It's not for any particular purpose. There is a stream on the, on the property. Uh, like we'd mentioned, we would have to get a proper approval, and if it's not approved for, uh, any particular reasons, then it just won't be there. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Warner, do you have anything?
Just some of the technical aspects that we had, and, um, Jordan was right. So, and the Masseys and the Watsons, when they came and talked at the planning commission meeting, as was mentioned, that was voted six-nothing to table, so we could answer some of those questions. And that conditions that we wrote, uh, with Jordan there were stemmed from that. So I wanted to highlight a few of those things, because that was something mentioned by, uh, Ms. Watson and actually Mrs. Massey as well. Um, as far as the water goes, it would be two hundred guests that the facility would be used for. We checked with the office of drinking water with the other, uh, facilities that are around, and they are also using wells. Uh, the question about the septic facility and having twenty, two hundred people at one time come there, it's a little technical term that we do, that we use called equalization. So it's kind of like a detention structure underneath, and it holds back that use of flow, uh, for the week. And so what it does is it lets it out periodically during the week. So that's how you do something like that, uh, in a facility of that nature, and that's what the others are doing as well. Um, it, it was mentioned, uh, about the architecture or the aesthetics of the building, and we had actually worked with a, a local architect here, uh, about insulated glass and stone and brick, and trying to keep that, um, classic look for the facility. The, the facility is fenced between our facility and the cows that are there. Um, he will also have a staff, so there is a place for someone to call that's not just the police department, but you have something going on that you can have something cleaned up, and then it's something that is enforced or reinforced with guests and fines of that And, and really, part of that haul road that we're using, A, it has a pretty good base, but secondly, uh, to limit the amount of clearing that you want to do, you really want your place to look as nice and pristine as well and keep that beauty. So to limit the amount of clearing, we'd like to use as much of that haul road that we can. So that's why we mentioned the conditions that we would survey that haul road. Obviously, they don't want that to be on their property anymore, so in those locations, we'd have to clear a little bit more area to get the haul road moved over if we couldn't get an easement granted for that. So that's why we had that in there, uh, in that condition. I think that's all I have written down here. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the board for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've, um, visited some of these other wedding venues, and the same concerns were brought out about them by their neighbors and stuff, and, and like I said, most of them have, in fact, all of them have turned into real good places. They're good to, for these purposes. And if you go by all the ifs that could happen in any venture, you would, you would never do anything if you worried about if this, if that, if whatever. Um, I've been around the road, I've seen the, you know, the, um, Glass Hill Venture, that was sort of the same situation here, and it turned out to be a wonderful situation there. And, uh, and this was bounced back to the, uh, developers through the planning commission and a lot of, uh, proffers or something was, I don't know if they were proffers or that, but anyway.
Those conditions.
Conditions. And, uh, I personally think that this would be a good thing, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the special use permit, SU one-nine-zero-zero-zero-one.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Discussion. You've heard the motion. Any other discussion?
I have some comments.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Michael Mitchell. So, so it's zoned agricultural, and, and what we're doing is creating a special use permit for a wedding venue in an agricultural zoning. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, your zoning ordinance, uh, the permitted use table allows for people that would like to start a conference center use to be able to apply, uh, for a special use permit in, in the agricultural rural preserve district, correct?
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got concerns about this. Like I said, I, you know, everything is great when water's in abundance and the water table's high, but these folks are watering their livestock. I assume you've got automatic waters? You got tributaries? Yeah, I'm, I do the same things on my farm, and, uh, you know, I see the, the water table rise and fall, and the average cow drinks about fifteen gallons of water a day and more than that, uh, when it's hot, up to twenty-five gallons a day. I'm an animal science major from the Ohio State University. Um, I seek potential for liability with cattle over the fence. Um, it, you know, and it never fails to amaze me how folks see cows, they walk over, they want to check them out, and there's a bull on this other side of the fence, or a cow, or a calf, or something happens, then there's a dog, uh, folks, you know, bring a dog out there, and I won't let anyone bring a dog on my farm because a dog that's never been around cattle will chase them. And I've seen cows die from that before, literally. Um, I think the noise is an issue. Again, I live out in the middle of nowhere because I want to, and I don't like the noise around me, and personally, I've, I've been to plenty of parties, and I, I do enjoy them. I think there's a place for them. I can imagine the sound that's going to escape through the best insulated walls they can have, especially that base. And the, the twenty-bedroom cabin, I mean, or the, the cabin that will hold twenty guests, probably wrong in saying that, uh, I could just imagine folks staying up all night long. I can remember doing that when I was young, and with no disregard for the neighbors. Um, so, so you're going to interrupt the peace and tranquility of this neighbor, of this area, and, uh, I think that the word's been used several times, primarily a wedding venue, primarily. I can see where it can go other ways as well, and, you know, I look at that parking lot, the footprint of that parking lot, it's huge. A six-thousand-square-foot building is big. I've got a fifty-five-hundred-square-foot building, and I know how big it is. And, uh, I don't care if you put it on forty-six acres, so I'm not in favor of it, with all due respect to the, to the farmers in that area, and that it is zoned agricultural, and I think it's a mistake to put it there.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I went to the planning commission meeting when, when this was brought up the first time, when it was voted to table, and I, I was supportive of, of seeing. I was sitting in the audience, I believe Ms. Parker might have, may have been there at that one, too. I'm not mistaken, no. But it was tabled to go back and ask, answer the questions. During COVID is when it, when the next meeting came up, when they approved it six-oh to approve it. That was, that was a virtual meeting that I was, it wasn't, it was here, okay. I don't know why, I, I wasn't at that one, but I was kind of surprised to hear that, because I know that there was a lot of opposition, and they brought up a lot of good points, and I, and it, I feel for the, the business wanting to get started. I mean, I'm pro-business, I'd, I'd like to invite businesses to Bedford County. I've been very involved with the EDA for years, and, and that's what we do, is we want businesses to come to Bedford County to, um, help us become, uh, a business-friendly community. But the number-one business in Bedford County is agriculture. That's, that is the number-one business that we're known for, and, uh, our revenue comes from agriculture. It's our number-one business. I, I just think there's so many things with what was presented and what's being presented here that's going to ill-effect our number-one industry in Bedford County, that I have a tough time supporting this, too, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments?
Another comment, Mr. Chairman, if you, if I may.
Sure.
Um, Glass Hill's been mentioned several times as a success, correct?
I don't believe it is.
It's in good. It's on a very, a road that's much wider, much straighter. Um, I really think that, that these folks are asking for trouble by putting this conference center out there where it is. It's, I, I, I just can't imagine that, that Camden Road's going to handle that kind of traffic safely. Especially, especially knowing that there are going to be folks out there enjoying alcohol or whatever, it's, it's...
I, I would, uh, just like to add, um, we do have, uh, one, the agricultural rural preserve, that is a, that's a, you know, we, we've got that zone, but it's, it sometimes creates some confusion for people, because they believe that, oh, well, then I'm buying into a preserve, and, but you're not. Um, it's, it, it, it doesn't have the same, say, tax structure as somebody putting their property into, um, uh, you know, a, a preserve. So we, we might even want to consider fixing that, that name, just because it does imply something that isn't necessarily true. But our zoning ordinance does allow for this kind of application in the form of a special use permit. And, and when we have a public hearing for a special use permit, we're allowed to add conditions. So that's what these conditions that they've offered, um, in, in this application. We can adjust conditions. Uh, we're allowed to do that. Uh, that doesn't have to be proffered when it's a special use permit. So if we need to, if you think something needs to be adjusted slightly, uh, in order to gain favor, then that also can be done. Uh, so that's the difference between a rezoning request and a special use permit, because we can condition it. Um, you know, I, I will say that, um, I, I was asked this evening, uh, before this meeting started, you know, have any opinion on this matter, and I said, to be honest, I don't. So I will say I do take offense if, if, um, if someone says, you've already decided to do this, because quite frankly, I haven't. I'm just listening, right? Um, and so I, I'm trying to listen to all the input, and I, and I think the majority of us come in with an open mind and listen to the, to, to the input. Uh, you know, I, I'm one that, that tends to err on the side of the, the person who owns the property should have the controlling interest of, of the property. But that's just my, my personal belief. You know, oftentimes, uh, I, I see it where somebody has, uh, horses on their property, and the neighbors don't want them to be able to do something, they want them to keep those horses. Well, you can't hold that person hostage to make them continue to have horses there. Um, so I, I see that a lot. But in the end, I'm still not sure how I'm going to vote, but I just wanted to clear some stuff up here. Um, but we do have a motion on the floor, and if there's no other discussion, I'm going to call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman, what about the, if, if this thing were to be approved, to, to change some of the, um, conditions?
Then you have to change those now, before we approve it. You can't change them after the fact.
Well, once again, like I said, I'm...
If, if you believe that you would support something if some condition were changed, what condition are you suggesting needs to be changed?
Well, I, for one, I don't support it, but I, I do believe that two hundred people out there is too many. I do believe that the water consumption is too great, and I believe that, that, you know, uh, an agricultural-type fence, which is plenty good enough to keep the cattle in, is not good enough to keep the...
People out.
People out, that don't know better. You know, um, today, people think food comes from a grocery store. They don't even know where milk comes from in a lot of cases. And, and so the, the danger exists out there, and the, the farmers are the ones that are going to bear the burden for that, whether a cow loses a calf, or, or dies, or something like that in a case such as that. The noise pollution, um, you know, this is a, an area that's pristine and tranquil. Why do they need to have that noise out there? If, I mean, if you want to have a wedding venue and have music and bands and drinking and carrying on, have it somewhere else besides out in the middle of Big Island, you know? I, I, I think we're wrong to approve it.
All right.
Let me approach. I have one question for Jordan, clarification.
Sure, go ahead.
On this cabin that will sleep twenty?
Yeah.
What, what's the, um, septic permit going to carry? I know what we have to do for, um, transient occupants out of the lake.
Right.
Two per room. So what, what's, what's that look like?
Well, this is a, this is a conference center, so part of a conference center includes overnight stay. Um, that is something they've ruled out with a condition or something like that, so certainly within their, their means to be able to do that, of course, you know, as being a conference center, wedding venue, you know, you would assess your taxes based on that. It's, it's not a short-term rental is what I'm aiming at there. He's, he's specifically asking about the septic system itself. Septic system for that? Maybe Mr. Warner can address that, but that would be something that would come along with the site plan stage of this project. Usually it's based on bedrooms. You want to answer?
We would, um, we would have a soil scientist, it would be either a two separate system, where the conference center would have its drain field on that equalization tank that I talked about, and then the lodging area may have its own in a separate drain field. And it all depends on what the soil scientist would come from when we go through the site plan stage. So that would be, we would work with the health department in coming up with the proper location for that. And then if there was a stream on site, if there's a well on site, all those distances have to be maintained based on health department standards.
Well, if it's overnight, this is where I'm getting at, because I deal with these calls every day out at the lake, the people short-term rent. I know this is a slightly different thing, but it's not. People are staying overnight. There are absolute guidelines that the county has for people to stay overnight. And I'm just wanting to know, how does that adhere to the same policy we already have regarding overnight stays? Because they're, they're not staying for free.
I think what you're talking about there would be like a residential home, you know? The short-term rental of a residential home requires, you know, two, two overnight occupants over the age of two, um, for overnight stay. What I would say is that only applies to someone that's doing short-term rental, though. That doesn't apply to, um, there's no maximum occupants for, you know, we do have a families' limit, I guess, in the ordinance for how many unrelateds can be under a dwelling roof, but, you know, if you had, you know, lots of kids or something of that nature, there's nothing that would prevent you from living in a two- or three-bedroom home. It would still be a single-family home at that point in time. I get what you're saying. You're trying to equate it to that same number, but that only applies to short-term rental.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, someone had mentioned, uh, at, at, during the presentation this evening, that the hours that are stipulated here keep the traffic off of the road at the times when it's really busy. But if you've got twenty people staying in a cabin Monday through Friday, wouldn't you have, wouldn't you expect to see traffic on the road the next morning when the school buses are on the road, or the children at the school bus stops? Because I know that that road, when, when you meet a school bus on that road, some, something's got to give.
If I can answer that question, but the lodging...
And we had so much discussion about the actual use of the actual hall, the wedding venue, that we never really thought about a, a condition on the lodging in, in an hour like that. But lodging would be staying from Friday through Sunday, would be like a weekend opportunity for a wedding, so it could be.
So no one will be staying Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, they would not be staying, no sir.
So then it, it seems that the applicant wouldn't have a problem with the condition that the lodging facility would not be available for use or be limited for Friday and Saturday night.
Correct.
Only, you know, for overnight stay.
Yes, sir.
So if somebody wanted to add that condition, but we have a motion on the floor that we have to address first. Now, it sounds like the applicant is agreeable to that condition on the lodging. Are you willing to add that condition to the special use permit to limit the lodging to Friday and Saturday evenings?
Yes, because that's what I thought, that's why I.
That's what you understood it anyway?
Yeah, I thought that it was for the wedding purpose, so after the wedding, I'd have to drive away.
Right. So, so the lodging, so we're adding a condition that the lodging would be limited to Friday evenings, Saturday evenings. Obviously, they'd be checking out on Sunday, but. Well, we have a motion on the floor. Can we call for the vote?
Mr. Chairman, were you adding that condition?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, he was agreeable to add that condition. All right.
Yes.
Tommy? Yes. Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mrs. Bensley?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
The chair votes yes. So that's.
Four to three.
Four to three. Next, we have a public hearing, consideration of a resolution initiating an amendment to the Bedford County zoning ordinance to address off-street parking construction standards for conference center use. Resolution R.062220-03.
That's the double A action.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. I've got that, ah, yeah, okay. All right, then, next we have a consideration of a resolution initiating amendment, oh, no, it's still on my list.
D, I'll go to D next.
Okay. Oh, it didn't get removed here, just got it added here, that's my problem. Okay. Next, we have a consideration of an ordinance amending the corridor overlay district permitted uses of the Bedford County zoning ordinance. Ordinance O.062220-05. Staff presentation by Community Development Interim Director Jordan Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you've, I believe the board did discuss this on their April 27 meeting under a board comment, I mean, Mr., Ms. Parker brought that up. And this was something the Planning Commission wanted to do to address some issues that we're currently seeing in some of the zoning districts in the county along our major corridor roads. And in order to facilitate more businesses to locate on those roads that have, as you know, some of their better access in the county, they wanted to move forward with amending the corridor overlay district to provide a special use permit process for items listed in the permitted use table as civic. Originally, it was office and commercial uses, and after they held their public hearing, based on recommendations from, from myself, they did add the civic uses in as well. However, at the public hearing that we had on this one on June 16th last Tuesday, the Planning Commission did recommend from this ordinance to remove Route 43 and a portion of Route 24 that was designated as a scenic byway through some of the comments that were presented through the citizen comment period for it. If you have any questions I can answer from a planning and zoning perspective, this is a really, I guess you would say, simple text amendment. However, it does provide, you know, for a new avenue for business owners and property owners to be able to apply for certain use groups in the permitted use table in the corridor overlay district, special use permits. So, do you have any questions I can answer for you?
Yeah, Jordan, if you don't mind, if you would clarify that what we're doing with this is changing the process.
Yeah.
So we're not, so what, we have to afford citizens a process to ask for an exception to the zoning.
Sure.
We're, we're changing it from asking for a rezoning of their property, which is not the proper process, to asking for a special use permit. So it's really, we're doing house cleaning of what we should have done a long time ago because asking to rezone one piece of property is not the proper process. So if you would just put it in that perspective.
Yeah, sure. What, as Ms. Parker stated there, this is just providing another avenue for some, for one of those uses to be able to be approved of on the property versus having to go through a rezoning for a property. And then in some events, you know, you get the rezoning plus the special use for some uses already, as is. And as you know, the rezoning has a much higher burden from approval than a special use permit would, but you would still have the, the authority to be able to, you know, approve or deny those special use permits. It's just another way for people not to have to clear the rezoning hurdle before having to go through a special use permit process is a perceived easier process to go through, but you would still have the autonomy to approve and deny those as well. After public hearing, hearing public comment.
And plus, it alleviates the spot zoning, which is illegal.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any questions, any other questions to ask?
Jordan, I think I have reached out to you, it's been several months ago, before COVID, about a, right before COVID, there was a doctor.
Yeah.
Who wanted to be on, was that 26?
43. 43.
43. With this, now you said they shortened it.
Yeah.
Would that doctor's office be allowed now? No.
Not in the location that they were proposing. There is an AV area there that I, I didn't meet with that potential person there, and they were going to try to target the AV zoning district to try to place that.
Sending Glenwood?
Doctor's office. Around Glenwood, yes, sir.
So because of planning shortened what?
We didn't. Planning, the board felt that through the comment that they wanted to exclude the scenic byways.
And so where they wanted was a scenic byway?
Yeah, 43. Yes, ma'am.
But that's not that far, then. The scenic byway does not go to Lynch Station.
All, all of 43 in Bedford County is in the scenic byway. Only a portion of 24 is.
After Jordan, and in discussion with you.
All right, any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll open this up for a public comment. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, and I have no one signed up, then I'll close this portion of the public hearing and open it up to the board for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Parker.
I'd like to address that Planning Commission decided to, to, to take out 43 scenic byway, and I don't know what portion of 24, I don't know, it was a portion of 24. However, I would propose that we don't do that because you take, for instance, on 43, Northside Supply, been there for years, it's on a scenic byway, you know, now that wouldn't be allowed, you know, groceries, mountain produce, convenience store, you know, on the scenic byway, we have things on the scenic byway. With this, I don't know why they put this on there because it's a special use permit. We need to afford the people a process to go through. We can, and if it's, if it's not appropriate to put it there, then we vote no. But you have to afford the people a process to go through. Their only alternative would be to apply for a rezoning of their property. And that is, we can't do that, it's illegal because it's spot zoning. So, but we, we, government cannot control people's property. We have to provide a process to get a variance from zoning ordinance. We have four processes, variance, appeal, special use, and rezoning. And this is the, the proper process for people to ask. That's what this is, they're asking. And to say, just because it's on a scenic byway, that, you know, you can't put it there, I don't, they need to have the opportunity to ask. So I would propose that we, we don't, we take out the part about the scenic byway.
Can I address that comment? Because I feel like I really should. And, and the reason I would like to comment on that is because we have a Planning Commission member that thinks that when special use permits are in your ordinance, it's your, you have to approve them. You just condition them. That is not the case. Special use permits give you the autonomy to decide whether or not they fit or they don't fit. Their concern was is that with that assumption of approval, then that would mean that if we got a special use, then you would have to, you would proliferate these scenic byways. However, that is not the case. You, you do have the ability to approve and deny of these requests. It's not an assumed or perceived approval with conditions. I think that was something that we'll have a, a further talk with the, with the Planning Commission on, but that commissioner was able to, I guess, convince the other Planning Commission that was the case. But we will have that conversation later on, but I want to make it very clear, you totally, special use permit means it either, it may fit or it may not, and you, you can make that choice.
So there's no further discussion?
Well, I have a question for our attorney, and that is if we modify this so that it does include the scenic byway, do we have to re-advertise?
I think the advertising went out at the same time the Planning Commission did, so it incorporated anybody who would be affected on this. So the Planning Commission took it out, you can put it back in.
Okay.
Recovered by our notes. If that makes sense.
Okay, as long as we're, I just want to make sure we're legal.
Short answer is we're legal.
Okay. All right, so.
Does it have to go back to the planning?
Mrs. Parker, you're proposing that it.
We leave it the way it was.
It originally was.
Yes.
Well, it was originally proposed.
Right. With removing the part that it doesn't, it's not included on the scenic byway, which is 43. And I don't know what the 24 was all about, but that's not.
It's just because it runs parallel.
It's, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, my God.
That's the story.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, let me get it.
With?
With removing the section about the scenic byway and 24.
Removing the exclusion to the scenic.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, just for clarification purposes. All right, you've heard the motion from Mrs. Parker, any other discussion? All right, I'm going to just do a voice vote unless it's questionable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Seven oh. Next, we have a public hearing, consideration of a resolution to approve special use permit, SU.20-0003, to establish a construction yard use and a general office use on a parcel identified as tax map number 148-A-32. This is resolution R.062220-04. Staff presentation by Planner Mariel Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mariel Fowler, and with the Division of Planning here to present special use application The applicant is Native Land Works, represented by Mr. Josh Spence. The owner of the subject parcel is the Chesley Group. This lot is identified by tax map number 148-A-32 and located at 2565 East Lynchburg Sailing Turnpike or Route 460. It is three acres in size and sound AR with corridor overlay. Based on the recently approved text amendment, the applicant is proposing to establish the general office use. This is located in Election District 7. And this map shows the location of the parcel in relation to county roads. Nearby, approximately less than half mile are the town of Bedford limits, which start around Town Gate Road. They beat out Bedford residency offices and lows are found off of Shiloh Church Road. The zoning map shows a parcel in the AR district with the corridor overlay. Surrounding properties are also sound AR, split sound APAR, AP, and to the west, some are sound PCD. The future land use map shows this area has been designated agricultural natural resource stewardship. It contains an area designated as commercial light industrial within approximately 1,000 feet from the subject parcel to the west. And this area photographed from 2018, very similar from how it currently looks like after the clearing of the trees. It shows the parcel currently being utilized for residential purposes with a vacant home. Surrounding uses are agricultural, residential, some commercial, all remain undeveloped. This is the concept plan submitted by the applicant's engineer. It shows the proposed improvements to the lot, a 5,000-square-foot building for offices and maintenance shop and associated parking spaces. They're also proposing a 1,000-square-foot covered storage area within fenced equipment storage area. If the special use is granted, the applicant will need to establish the use with a site plan, by submitting a site plan for review in accordance with Article 5 of the zoning ordinance and the conditions approved with this application. These are the recommended uses. With a special use, the board may attach, as you know, any conditions to ensure the project meets specific and general standards. These are recommended by the staff. Any proposed line associated with general office use shall be directed downward and away from adjoining properties. All materials stored on the premises overnight shall be placed in a storage yard. The storage yard shall be fully screened from surrounding views and shall be set back at least 100 feet from any adjoining property lines. The Planning Commission public hearing was held on June 16th where no citizens spoke for or against the application. A recommendation of approval passed by a vote of six to one with the conditions. And this concludes staff's presentation. Any questions I can answer from the planning perspective?
Any questions? All right.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, what exactly is this business going to be?
The applicant is here that can talk about that if you want to.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Norm Walton, I'm with Perkins and Orson, I'm representing the applicant this afternoon. I'll keep this brief. We've been to Planning Commission several times with this application. The ordinance amendment that you just passed was kind of spurred by this project specifically. This little stretch of 460 has a mixed use of agricultural, residential, and commercial uses. VDOT's right down the road from this, there's an HVAC center, a sign shop, as well as auto repair establishment. So we feel that it really is not intrusive into the neighborhood, it doesn't detract from this section of 460. I think all of us believe that 460 is a development corridor within the county, and the ordinance that you just passed kind of allows that. The applicant, Mr. Josh Spence, with Native Land Works is here. And briefly, Native Land Works is a property management company, they do. They do some irrigation work, so they do have piping and fittings, which will mostly be contained inside of their building. They will have trucks, trailers, small equipment that they will house in the screened area that Mrs. Fowler mentioned. Nothing will be outside exposed. It will be screened from vehicles going down 460. We do have one issue with VDOT. I can't remember. Did you mention the limited access? We do have one issue with VDOT. There's a... This stretch of roadway, believe it or not, is limited access. There's one break in the limited access where the existing entrance is, and we can accommodate our commercial entrance for that break in the limited access. If you have any other questions, I'll be more than happy to entertain or Mr. Spence.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. How much traffic will go in and out of this driveway?
This isn't a retail center, you know? So he's not gonna sell fittings or sell that kind of stuff. So he'll have, you know, his folks come in early in the morning, 6:30, 7 o'clock, and then they'll dispatch to their projects, come in late in the afternoon. So, you know, a couple of dozen trips a day.
Is a turn lane required?
No, sir.
Either way?
Either way, correct.
So this is more staging more than retail?
Correct. Yes, sir. It's a office for their business as well as staging their materials, none outside.
Of course, the crossover going west, I can't... I know where it is, but I can't place...
You asked me the question about the turn lane, and I can't remember. It's a crossover.
Crossover is up there. Lowe's and VDOT. You gotta go to VDOT, don't you?
There's one right at the property.
There's one at the...
Yeah, it's right at the edge of the property.
So if you're going west, you can turn right into your...
No, you gotta make it small. You turn about 500 feet.
Is there a turn lane at that crossover?
Just for that traffic. It's just within the...
I'd have to look at Mariel Fowler if I can't remember.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I mean, I'm all about this, but I am very concerned. I run 460 every morning and evening, and the traffic there is really, really sketchy. You know, we run trucks and trailers out of our locations and not on a four lane. I mean, that's a... I mean, I'm surprised VDOT wouldn't want you to have a turn lane there, in my opinion.
It's really the size of the business. It's such a small business. It's... How many trucks do you have, Josh? If you want to come up?
Yeah. No, it's come up $20, at least, for sure. Basically, we do about 50% of our work out of town. We're from... We go anywhere from New York to Georgia. I got two guys that left this morning, went to Ohio. I got two that went to Georgia, and they make loops back to town. So half of my crew, which is only eight members anyhow strong, not including the office personnel, are there about every other week. So traffic is fairly minimal, and I think with the commercial entrance, it gives you a pretty good head start because you're on a paved substance. You're not coming out of a farm road, you know, where you're skidding tires. But we're hoping that, you know, with the commercial entrance, that'll help alleviate some of that.
Question?
Yep.
Why'd you choose Bedford?
Taxes. Yeah.
He's located.
That's a good answer. I like that answer.
Yeah. We're in Campbell County right now. And I live in Bedford County. I live on Timber Ridge Road. I'm right down the road. So I know what Bedford County is.
How much water do you use?
Right, right, yeah. I understand. But, yeah, is that answer.
No more questions from me.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. All right. All right. This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public for any comment. All right. Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the public hearing and open it up to the board for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I lost my place on my computer because it's too small to read, but you may have to read the number, but I make a motion we approve this.
Yeah. Mr. Scott's making a motion to approve resolution R-062220-04. Yeah? Mrs. Parker, did you have?
I was gonna say it's in District 7, so I was gonna make the...
Oh, I will throw my motion.
Thank you.
I'm used to doing like this.
Tommy wants to go home.
I would make a motion to approve this special use permit for this construction yard and
All right. You've heard the motion from Mrs. Parker. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We need a roll call for a special use? All right. Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Scott? Mrs. Bainsley?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes to both of them.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. Motion passed, seven oh. Next, we have... Well, first, we're gonna do the consent agenda item that got moved. This is consideration of a resolution appropriating fiscal year 2020 receipts. That was resolution R-062220-01. I'm assuming we do not have any additional information on the forfeited assets. Is that correct?
I'll just say that I'll take a little text during the meeting. I would admit it to our finance director, get a little bit more information, and I can call her if we need to. But generally speaking, you know, these are funds that are seized during an investigation process. I won't go into the details of what that looks like. But anyways, and they're remitted to the state and federal government. And then there's a portion that given back to the community when that count for that criminal activity that occurred. So there are strict guidelines around how to use these funds. I mean, they're kept in a separate account from the general funds. The money is often used to help in other criminal investigations. It doesn't carry... It doesn't get into any general operating expenses. So...
I will add, and maybe Sheriff Miller can correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember one other time this question came up, and I remember Sheriff Brown indicated that they had very little in forfeited assets, specifically because they... In some localities, maybe there's forfeited assets and somebody's not even found guilty. In Bedford County, that, as I understand it, that's not the case.
That's what I was concerned about right there.
And so is that still accurate, Sheriff Miller?
So they've been found guilty.
They've been found guilty.
That's all I was concerned about.
They've gone through court and everything.
Okay. Because that concern has come up before, and I do recall that answer from Sheriff Brown.
Yes, sir.
That's still the policy of the...
That's still the policy.
Okay.
And I was just gonna add, Mr. Chairman, it's gotten to the point where we're getting the monies back, that due process has already been done as far as notice, publication, that sort of thing. So we've...
Thank you. Thank you for all that.
Sure.
All right. So now I'll...
I would like to make the motion that we approve, whatever that number was. Oh, here it is. Resolution R-062220-01.
All right. You've heard the motion from Mrs. Bainsley. This will have to be a roll call. Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carried, seven oh. Next, we have consideration of a resolution initiating an amendment to the Bedford County zoning ordinance to address off-street parking construction standards for conference center use. Resolution R-062220-03. Staff pres... Well, I guess we have staff presentation, but it also says there's a presentation by Parkinson Orson also.
I think Parkinson Orson said they would be available for questions. They were gonna forego their presentation to you. Parkinson Orson, on behalf of their client, Glenn Thomas, is proposing to amend the construction standards for the parking area for a conference center use. I put an ordinance together for you if you wanted to initiate that text amendment. And basically, what this would do is it would add conference centers, you know, wedding venues, we just had a hearing for, in the APAR and AV zoning districts to be gravel or have grass parking areas. So reduce impervious area. And it certainly would be in tune. I think they've provided some information from Campbell and Amherst County as well. Certainly would be in tune with how some of the surrounding jurisdictions are treating similar uses, so...
This would be in specific zones?
Yes. It applies to the ag districts, APAR, AV.
Okay. So, and it reduces the impervious surface?
Yes, correct. They can use grass as an option as long as they can submit us the information needed to be able to do that.
Okay. Well, it seems less impactful on the environment.
Will they be parking on the shoulder of the road, for instance, like on a narrow road like Camden Road? Or will they be parking on the property?
This is onsite parking, so this will be an area that they would designate on a site plan approval for us as an area where they are going to have parking for their venue.
But instead of having to, say, put down blacktop or concrete, they can have gravel or some other surface that allows the water to seep into the water table.
And also to add, Mr. Thomas said he is happy to pay for the public advertising cost too as well for this if you choose to initiate. So this is the first time we've ever had anyone take us up on this section of our zoning ordinance, so, you know, let me... If you want to... It'll go to the planning commission if you decide to initiate the resolution. We would have public hearings and come back to you at a future date.
All right. So you're just looking for consensus at this point?
No. You would need to initiate the text amendment, yes, sir.
You need to vote.
Yes, sir.
All right. This is an action item, not a public hearing, so I'll entertain discussion and possible
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we would... Resolution R-062220-03.
All right. You've heard the motion from Mr. Tuck. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carried. All right. Next, we have consideration of a resolution in support of religious freedom and a time for celebration on July 4th. Resolution R-062220-06. Staff presentation by county administrator Robert His.
I was contacted by a couple of board members regarding this resolution, so it's not very long. I can read it if you want to, and then if there can be any discussion, then vote to adopt, I suppose. Whereas Amendment 1 to United States Constitution provides for the free exercise of religion in the United States and the right to peaceful assembly. And whereas Section 16 of the Bill of Rights contained in the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia further establishes that all men are equally entitled to the free exercise of religion. And whereas recent events related to coronavirus have adversely affected the free exercise of religion due to concerns regarding public safety, resulting in the cancellation or restriction of religious events and worship for citizens of all faiths and backgrounds. And whereas further events have resulted in concerns, debate, and protests regarding the equal treatment of the citizens of Virginia under the law. And whereas throughout our nation's history, people of all faiths have turned to their Creator in times of national and state emergencies and during periods of turmoil. And whereas Bedford County supports the United States Constitution of the Virginia Bill of Rights regarding the free exercise of religion. Whereas a Fourth of July weekend has been established as a time for celebrating and giving thanks for the blessings endowed by our Creator and giving us a country founded upon the principles of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Bedford County Board of Supervisors that citizens of all faiths should gather freely and worship during the Fourth of July weekend without restriction to celebrate and give thanksgiving for the United States and our Commonwealth, and to pray for the healing of our land from coronavirus and racial division.
All right. And you've heard the resolution from Mr. His. Any discussion?
I'll just say this bore out from a group of men out at Smith Mountain Lake that wanted to take the opportunity that we are not in Phase 3 by the Fourth of July weekend, that we would encourage churches to gather freely and celebrate Fourth of July and also pray for racial divides. I'm very happy with the way this has read out. If there are no comments or changes to that, I would move that we adopt resolution R-062220-06.
All right. You've heard the motion from Mr. Tuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah. I mean, I'm getting sick tired of this face.
I got a question about something.
Yeah, Mr. Scott.
This gentleman that came up a little while ago talked about, you know, we've been under this quarantine for...
Yeah, he's still here.
102 days.
102 days. If we can do this about religion, why can't we do what he was asking?
I think we have.
Great question.
Yeah.
We have what?
I said that's a great question.
Yeah.
As far as I know, a lot of businesses have...
I'd be glad to help you draft it.
None of them have been charged with anything, as far as I know. Let me know if I'm wrong, but some businesses have opened up and have been followed all of those type restrictions, and they have not had any...
Mr. Chairman? Yes. They haven't been charged because our law enforcement officers have been out catching real criminals that have been beating up women in the head with a wrench and murdering people. They haven't been spending their time going door-to-door to see if anybody's wearing a mask.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have a constitution that guarantees us freedom of assembly, as Mr. His already pointed out in their resolution. I think Bedford County needs to celebrate the Fourth of July. We've been too quiet for too long, and we need to celebrate the outdoor events that this nation has celebrated since our history.
Hey, as far as I'm concerned, whenever I get together with somebody, I'm protesting.
Amen.
Well, I gotta go back to my original question. Why can't we do what he was requesting tonight?
Well, I will say that, well, we have some correspondence from West Dance that kindly requested our actions and trying to honor Mr. Nance's request because I think that it's... He's approaching things in a very reasonable way, so...
But this right here, come July 4th, if Phase 3 has come taking place, this will be illegal. So are we approving?
According to the governor.
Yeah. Are we approving?
I think the governor is illegal.
Are we approving this and telling the citizens of Bedford County to break the law? Now, don't get me wrong, I'm for this. I'm just saying, why can't we take it one step further?
I'd love to read something right now, but I...
Well, not yet. You have to do that in public. I mean, and you more comment.
Well, we don't have enough... Maybe we don't have another meeting before July 4th.
We need to.
We might. Something to talk about. They're under my section.
Great. Wonderful. All right. Next, we have consideration of a resolution. Yes?
My question hasn't been answered.
You can ask it during the board comments.
Can I try to answer his question?
We can address it during board comments. We're gonna move to the next item on the agenda. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the submission, acceptance, and appropriation of a National Register survey grant for the Susie G. Gibson High School and Bedford Training School. Resolution R-062220-07. Staff presentation by county administrator Robert His.
So quickly, this... We were approached... I was approached by Betty Giroux regarding this grant application. After some discussion, you know, this is a building that's not owned by Bedford County government. It's owned by the school board. So I asked the school board administration if they were okay if Bedford County was the applicant. I think it's in the packet. They passed a resolution authorizing us being the applicant. So the way this really works is we're really just a conduit... So the way this really works is we're really just a conduit for the state funds. There's zero cost to the county. The Department of Historical Resources administers all aspects of the grant and the project, including securing a contractor and monitoring the work. This is to try to get it, to basically do the background work to have these two facilities put on the National Register of Historic Places. Project is aligned with the towns and comprehensive plan. I talked with Bart Warner from the town in Mary's Urkel, and they were, they were supportive of this grant and wrote a letter of support too. And probably the main thing is that the Susie G. Gibson Alumni Association and Historical Society have pledged to come up with a grant match. So we're really just, like I said, we're the kind of fiscal agent.
We're the conduit.
Conduit. So, and I think I sent out in my weekly memo that they've already awarded this grant, so that's a good thing too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this Resolution R 062220-07.
It's in my district.
Because I was in the inaugural class in 1969 when Susie G. Gibson was, stopped being Susie G. Gibson in 1968. I was in the first class in 69 to attend Bedford Educational Center with Sheriff Miller's brother Mike, Ed. And I'd like to defer to the...
So it's two mics in your cap?
Supervisor. I'd like to defer to Supervisor Davis there since it's in his district.
Well, that was the year that my family moved to Virginia, and I was in a completely white segregated school in Ohio, a rural area, and I'll tell you what, it was neat getting together with these folks. And I practiced football over there when they made JF, but I moved that we approve this.
All right, you've heard the motion from Mr. Davis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next we have consideration of a resolution authorizing the submission, acceptance, and supplemental appropriation of a grant with the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. 2021 Virginia Telecommunications Initiative, Resolution R 062220-08. Staff presentation by County Administrator Robert His.
I think I'm going to defer to Tracy Bledow, let her lead off. And since she's already there, Mazel tov.
We have the opportunity, you might remember last year Chantel was talking to us about putting in a grant for her body, and it didn't work out with the deadline of public meetings or something, but this year because of coronavirus, all we need is a letter of intent from the county to submit, and I have a month to do that with Chantel to come up with all the different maps, which they've already done, and submit that. And it is for areas, and I'll name these, and they might be in all of your areas, so you can fight over the motion. Cedar Berry Lane in Forest, which is nine homes and four lots. Everett Road West Crossing Drive Forest, which is 145 homes, 40 lots. Goode Road in Goode, 35 homes, no lots. Highland Oaks Road Lynchburg, which is Boonsborough area, 26 homes plus 25 lots. Jubal Early Drive in Forest, eight homes, no lots. Kings Grant Drive in Goode, 63 homes and no lots. And Twin Lakes Drive Bedford, 77 homes and 14 lots. These are areas that fit into the grant because they are currently unserved. And even when we look at what Blue Ridge Towers is doing, these are really stretching it and either outside of those areas or, you know, barely in. So it is eligible. So I'm looking for authorization to submit a grant.
And Chantel covers the...
Full match. County, no funds.
Yeah, again, this would be, we're a conduit, somewhat similar to the Comcast Tobacco Commission Grant, where we're the conduit and the fiscal agent of the funds, if this is successful.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, since I've heard Goode many times, I make a motion that we accept Resolution R 062220-08.
All right, you've heard the motion from Mrs. Bensley. Since there's money involved, do I need to take a roll call vote? Let's just do it, to be safe. Mrs. Bensley?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you, Tracy.
All right. Next we have a consideration of a resolution approving a change order for the Wheat's Valley Broadband Tower Site. This is Resolution R 062220-09. Staff presentation, Robert His.
This was brought to our attention late last week, and so we kind of, this was added to the agenda because didn't want to be the county to have a role in potentially delaying the project. So anyways, these, this one in particular for Wheat's Valley Road is, or Wheat's Valley Site is regarding putting together a retaining wall for, and the civil work related to that. And it's, after some discussion with, this is a site that's really, we're utilizing through BRWA, it ended up being, believe it or not, that the retaining wall is less expensive over the long term than trying to maintain that slope for years and years into the future. So that's where the thought process behind this is coming from, so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. His, is this, this project's been going on since 2018, before I was on the board, right? And how is it that we're just now finding out that a tower needs a retaining wall? I mean, I would have thought this would have been planned out long before now, and I'm shocked at the cost of these retaining walls. I've seen and had built plenty of retaining walls, and they've been very similar in their size. And I might, you know, I knew going into it, if I was in a troublesome site, that we had to plan ahead. How is it that this is just now coming to light?
And I have our project consultant, George Kandilis, on the phone if need be. I will say, Edgar, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, this has been discussed, so the answer is that it's been discussed at several of the broadband citizen advisory committee meetings, so we knew it was coming, but we just received the paperwork for, with the bid and the request for the funds, so.
And were there other contractors consulted for these bids?
George, can you, did you hear that? Mr. Davis asked if there was other contractors consulted for these bids.
Could you repeat that one more time, please?
Were there any other contractors that were consulted and received the bids, or bid on this project?
Well, there are contractors that do that work.
What did he say?
He was saying there was other...
I said there are other contractors that do those retaining walls.
But did they bid on it?
No, this is, we already have a general contractor, and this will be a subcontractor to the general contractor.
Yes, but that cost is being passed on to us, and if that cost is being passed on to us, we'd like to know that there was a competitive bid process.
I've, I've seen plenty of walls like this built for less than $100 a square foot.
Well, I'm guessing then what you can do then is say you will not enter into the change order, and then you want the general contractor to receive three bids, I guess?
Or it's another...
That would be my, my vote.
Yeah, if, if, if the general contractor is assuming the cost, they don't need to get additional bids. But if they want us to bear the cost, then we require three bids. That's our, we normally put it out for a request for quote, and we get multiple bids. So they...
But that's when you are, but that's when you are acting as the owner.
If they expect us to pay for it, yes.
Like the walls, well, in this, whether it's a wall or a bus or whatever. In this case, it is a response to an unstable slope.
Well, the fact that it's an unstable slope does, doesn't have any bearing on that. Mr. Kandilis, are you not a consultant for Bedford County? Or do you work for Blue Ridge Towers?
I've been Bedford County consultant for over 25 years.
Then I would think you would have been the first person that would have said we should get more than one bid, at least three.
If the, if the cost is being borne by the county, we expect multiple bids.
We're paying you to perform a service to represent us in the best possible way.
I will go back to the general contractor and tell them to get two more bids.
All right, that's appropriate.
So then you'll have three, and then from there, a decision can be made.
Can I ask if this is going to hold up broadband?
My answer is no. The general contractor probably will say yes. However, these are really erosion control devices. The, the one at Wheat's Valley is important because we don't want to have erosion where that's positioned, that could affect the dam. The, the Big Island one is more of, it's just crummy soil, and we need to remove it and to put in, you know, a wall with engineered fill, and that's why that one is slightly higher. Well, not slightly, it's very much higher.
Well, you've already got all the materials across.
I can instruct, it's not a problem, I can instruct them to get two more bids, and then we'll look at those and then bring you another recommendation.
Would that be, would that be for both?
Would that be for what?
For both of these change orders?
Yeah, I mean, what I'll do is go back and say that the board would prefer to get two more prices for each. I'm sure it'll be the two firms that will give prices for each one. So you'll, you have right now the ones that are from, let me open up my package here.
Rosser.
From Ross, Ross are designed in landscaping. So then I'm sure there'll be two other, let's say competitors of theirs, that will put something together.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tuck.
I have a question for Mr. Skelly. Would we be able to amend this to add verbiage subject to reasonable assurances that three bids have been received and not to exceed the one we have? We have, we have change order for X, Y, Z dollars.
He's trying to keep things moving along and hold up the price.
Are you saying authorize a change order for the lowest of three bids received?
Right, not to exceed what's already, what's already going.
I think that'd be acceptable.
I'd like to maybe say something about that too. The two bids can't, cannot exceed what we already have, but we also need to take in consideration if we get a lower bid and that person says I can't get to it for six to eight weeks. So I think we ought to get two more bids, depending on the timeframe they can do it in and all that, and leave it up to the discretion of Robert to decide which way he wants to go.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that's a good caveat, I think. That would be a concern of mine, that somebody could submit a bid for 25% less but not be able to get to it till August.
Yeah.
So to understand by doing this, we wouldn't have to come back in July to vote, wait till we come back in July to approve it?
Yeah, we handled administratively...
Yeah, let's do it.
...to Robert at that point.
Yeah, I want to do that.
All right.
Well, for the one tower, it's a stability issue, so I assume that wall, or that wall has to go up before the tower can be put up, is that correct?
Tower.
But the other one, it's simply an erosion issue.
Well, both, both will be required to be done.
One is the tower is already there, that's Big Island, and the other one is to be built. So, you know, my recommendation is, is that you set a dollar amount for both of them. And just, let's just say $75,000 or $60,000 or whatever. The linear, the, a square foot is about $100 if you do it in concrete, okay? So, you know, this is a, this is a block system, which is, you know, one method of doing it. We may get a bid back, you know, that's just a cast-in-place concrete wall, and that's, I'm making a number up here, that's $50,000, let's say, for both, and therefore, you know, we'd rather go the concrete route versus the stacked block route.
Has the engineering fee already been paid for the, for the stacked block?
No, I mean, that's part of, of this bid here, and I would assume that we would hold on to Rosner, is their, this is their bid, and then we would direct the general contractor to get two more prices.
Yep. I think that's correct. Okay.
And then leave it up to Robert to decide based on timeframe.
A dollar, one more bid.
Yep. That way we don't hold things up.
Right.
All right. I think that's all we need of George.
All right, thank you, George, appreciate it.
Okay, sure thing.
All right. Then, well, we're, currently we're dealing with the one resolution, is there any reason why we can't handle both?
I was thinking you could do the both, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, somebody want to make a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt Resolutions R 062220-09 and 10, with the changes that we received reasonable assurance that there was a three-bid system and authorized County Administrator to execute the change order.
And not to exceed the...
Not to exceed...
The prices that we were already quoting. All right, any other discussion? Okay. I'm going to call for a vote. Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Bensley?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Of course, yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. Next we have board committee reports. We have none. Then we have board comments.
I have one committee report, Mr. Chair.
Oh, you do?
Well, it's the Running Valley Transportation Planning Organization that I attend the meetings, and it was interesting, surprised Bensley myself, and talked about some of the stuff that we, the smart highway funds and the things, and I was concerned that up there, they, they talked about all the approvals that they got, and nothing from Bedford County was part of what they did, and then they told me that's because we're not part of it yet. Our funds, our smart scale funds come out of Lynchburg, and every one of our submissions got moved to the next level except 24 and Jeter's Chapel Road, so that was encouraging for, from a beat-out standpoint on the smart scale, so it looks like all of our stuff is being elevated to the next level, making, making it to the next round.
All right. Board comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have something I'd like to read.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Whereas the past several weeks has seen cities, localities, and communities across the United States being racked by violence, thuggery, rioting, robbing, and desecration. And whereas this past weekend, for example, Chicago saw 102 shootings with 14 killings, including the murder of five children. And whereas Virginia localities have been hit by destruction, desecration of landmarks, looting, and assaults upon law enforcement. And whereas our governor must support our sheriffs, deputies, municipal and county police forces, and all state law enforcement. And whereas placating, pandering, catering, and coddling rioters, looters, destructors, and desecrators will only result in more lawlessness and disrespect for law enforcement. Whereas Bedford citizens are worried and concerned about the safety of their persons, property, and businesses, and therefore we resolve and urge the governor and his administration to stop any coddling and pandering, and stand up for law-abiding citizens, and fully support law enforcement and utilize the forces necessary to restore safety and security for the citizens of Virginia.
You would submit that to the board for... You would submit that to the board for discussion and potential adoption?
Yes, sir, I would.
Alright, any discussion?
We're in board comments?
Yeah, you don't vote, you don't put forth motions in comments.
We can, if it's unanimous, we can, as I.
Kevin, move this as a resolution.
Yeah, it's, this is board comments. It's not an action item. But are you suggesting we make this a resolution at our next meeting?
Yes, sir, I am.
What's the consensus of the board?
Fine with me.
So can you review it?
What's that?
Does it certainly can review?
I'd like our attorney to review it too.
Mr. Johnson, your opinion? You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Parker, you're okay?
Yes.
Alright, Patrick, you review it, give us something.
Mr. Davis, do you wanna send it hard copy, email, however you wanna get it to me?
Alright, any other board comments?
I got a couple.
Yep, special delivery.
I'll send it here real fast.
Robert, you might know about this, and if you're gonna bring it up, I'll shut up, but Andy Dooley, you gonna, you gonna talk about that?
Well, if, if, we can talk about it now if you want, but yeah, you can bring it up if you.
Well, he just wanted us to make sure we opened the ball fields back up because he has some tournaments coming up and all that stuff. He'd like to be able to use the ball fields. That's what I thought he said.
Yeah, I, I've talked to Mr. Dooley a couple times about this, and, um, we have at a staff level too. He's talked to, uh, you know, Wyatt Woody as well. We've been kinda torn as to what to do about this. Uh, there's softball tournaments and other baseball-related tournaments that Wyatt gets phone calls about fairly routinely. And, uh, Mr. Dooley is very involved in the Virginia softball and USA softball, so he does get involved with tournaments a good bit. Anyways, where we've kinda been is, you know, trying to, at a staff level, we've been trying to abide by the, we've been talking about this a good bit tonight, you know, the phase two versus the phase three. And what, what our opinion has been so far has been, um, that we weren't really, we weren't gonna start taking reservations for tournaments and those types of things until we were in the phase three. Because, you know, we had 250 people and we're just within all the guidelines and really there's no questions asked. However, after talking to Mr. Dooley, I mean, there are other jurisdictions who, especially around Richmond, like he was talking about in Raco County and Mason where else, who have had some tournaments and so forth, um, in while we're in phase two. So anyways, we've been kinda conflicted as to what to do at a staff level, um, and if there's any guidance the, the board wanted to give us, or pull up a cover.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, if someone wants to go and participate in a softball tournament or a baseball tournament in the wide open spaces of Bedford County, I think they should do it. And if they wanna wear masks, they can certainly wear a mask.
And if they wanna spend money here, that's fine too.
Absolutely.
I'm entirely in favor of this. I think we should approve it. Trying to find it, but there was, um, VHSL, Virginia High School League came up with their guidance for phase two. And there were three categories. There was low-risk, medium, and high-risk. And baseball softball was two. It did not seem to be a restriction that I read.
And Miss.
About to play. And there was for basketball and football. Can't share the same ball and can't tackle.
Mr. Chairman, I just gotta eat.
Tickets to that game, but, um, anyway, I don't have a problem.
I think we ought to open it up. I just got an email today from, uh, from our own Parks and Rec Department saying, you know, soccer sign-up is July 1st through August 1st. So, I mean, we're, we're opening back up.
Yeah, we're preparing for fall sports right now. I mean, we're, we advertise as sign-ups and so forth. Of course, that's, you know, fall sports are still two months off, but. By the way, I'm hearing from the board, and I kinda thought that this would be the case, but I'm hearing from the board that you would err on the side of, if we have tournaments who are interested in coming to Bedford County, let's allow them to come as long as they, or being safe about what they're doing.
I think people can determine what they deem to be safe.
Yeah.
I mean, we gotta stop coddling people.
Well, we're not gonna micromanage. We don't have the staff to do that. It, it'll take all of our staff just to get things ready. So we're not gonna.
Hey, the sheriff.
They don't wanna come, they won't come.
We're gonna get his, I saw him nod.
What about the sheriff arresting little kid?
American is baseball.
Alright.
Alright, I have one more.
Yep, go ahead.
Going back to my question.
We're gonna have another dinner.
We had a, we, I'll just come out, I would, I would, do we have, let's see, the problem is, nevermind.
Do we have what?
We had correspondence from Mr. Dance that respectfully asked for us to do things in a certain way.
But we went against that when we approved this religion.
No, we didn't. I don't think we did. And so, you know, and I, and I've tried to.
The governor still has restrictions on religion.
I understand, but I, in Bedford County, things aren't quite as restrictive, so.
That's what I'm saying.
I tend to like it. And I don't really wanna bring any heat on our businesses. Uh, I think we can, we can puff our chest out and try to stick the finger in the eye of the governor, but, but when we do that, I think we're gonna hurt the, the businesses in Bedford County. And that's, and that is the problem. So I'm willing to not take, take the stand that I wanna take in deference to, I think, a reasonable request by our Commonwealth attorney and our sheriff. And, and I think they've handled things well in Bedford County. And quite frankly, I think that's been in the best interest of the businesses in Bedford County. I'd like to not bring any additional heat to the businesses of Bedford County. So that's why I've, I've deferred to what they requested. I, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I'm, I'm just bringing up the point that when we approved this resolution on religion, we went against the governor because I have read everything on there about churches and everything else, and that, and it's still on there. It has not gone away until phase three.
I understand.
So I'm just asking, what's the difference?
Religious resolutions for three days. That's one difference.
And if.
We want our businesses to be open period, not just for three days.
I mean, if, if the board chooses to do otherwise, you know, that's its choice, but, you know, um, I, um.
Everybody knows where we stand.
Yeah.
Yes.
What of, what's next? Alright, with the, any other comments? Alright, board appointments. We have three appointments needed for the Public Collaborating System Board of Trustees. Do we have those names? How many applicants do we have? And we have three appointments? Anyone wanna make a motion that we approve all three of them?
You tell me your name, or I'll kill them. I can't find them.
I'd like to go home tonight. Yeah, they're not in the.
All the home.
It's a separate cover.
I'm completely in the dark on this.
Would you tell us the three names?
They're not in the, they're not in the. Come on, Mickey, we're counting on you here.
I think we need to have another meeting.
Alright, we got, Tommy's found three names. Pope, Cupit, Anna Stevens, and Randy Cox.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have moved that we would appoint Pope Cupit for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2020. Anna Stevens for a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2020. And Randy Cox to a four-year term beginning July 1st, 2020.
Alright, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposeds? Motion carried. Alright, next, we have county attorney report?
Yes, sir, and I'll, I'll be brief. Two things that transpired at the General Assembly that, uh, merited the board's attention. One is, uh, there's been a dramatic shift in solar power legislation.
The RPS has gone up.
Large-scale, uh, projects didn't meet with much favor when, uh, they approached Bedford County before. However, there is another interested prospect and, um, wanted to get some consensus of the board, whether you wanna hear more information about what they're proposing. And, um, one of the things that the General Assembly changed is that instead of going through merchants and, uh, tools, or machinery and tools tax and that sort of revenue stream, counties can actually get paid per kilowatt hour generated. So they're looking in the neighborhood of 65 to 80 megawatts at $1,400 a megawatt. And that's a constant stream. It's, it's pretty set, but they're looking at some property on the south side of the county and just had asked, and I let them know that, you know, there's been a tension between our ag community and, and the solar farm, um, proposals in the past. But if it's something the board would like to hear more about, I can certainly get some more information.
Well, I know the RPS standards are being increased, um, by the General Assembly. And it's probably gonna continue to happen with the current control of the legislature. So, um, you know, whether it's, you know, tax dollars are gonna be supplementing, you know, wind farms and, and solar PV. So, um, there's no getting around it. I mean, that, the, the way these, these industries have proliferated is through supplementation of tax dollars. Uh, otherwise, they're, they're not as cost competitive, but, um, but, you know, the price has gone down dramatically, but nevertheless, it still needs those tax credits. But it's, the utilities are being forced to increase their, their, um, makeup in renewables. So they can't, it can't all be coal and natural gas. Most of the coal plants have shut down, but there's natural gas and hydro, hydro is counted as a renewable. But, um, you know, it's gonna be more and more, there's gonna be a lot more pressure for the utilities to increase their makeup of renewables. And it's happening in Virginia now.
I've received three phone calls because they are burning up the phones to property owners on the south side. I wouldn't have minded having more information about it. I don't know that I'm sold on it, but I do have a lot of folks calling. I've had three specifically call about it.
And, and are they favorable?
Yeah, they wanna know what they can do to get us to let them put a solar farm.
Yeah, because they're gonna, they're gonna get paid, yeah. Okay.
Information don't hurt.
Yeah, I guess you can get us information.
Sure.
Alright, anything else?
The other thing is, um, our three clerks of court reached out. Um, there is currently, uh, chargeable to people convicted of criminal offense, a $10 courthouse security fee. The General Assembly raised that, uh, to a maximum of $20 starting July 1st. And clerks asked me if I would reach out to you all and see if there's, um, interest in, uh, increasing the fee that's currently being assessed. And again, this isn't for people going to file things. These are for people who are actually convicted, um, as part of their court costs.
Where do those funds go?
Courthouse security. Now, I can't say 100% that they're supposed to be dedicated for that. I don't know if the sheriff knows off the top of his head.
It has to be for courthouse security.
So those are actually, thank you, Sheriff Keller, dedicated funds, so whatever's collected goes specifically to courthouse security.
With what courthouse security we've got now, what will this additional money do? Will it increase the security, or will it ease the burden of the cost of security to taxpayers?
Yes, it'll ease the burden, uh, because we've got to come to you all to get more security.
Then I like it.
And I'll say courthouse security concerns are ongoing with our courthouse. I don't think there's any lack of them. I mean, we still have parking garages that are open to the public where the judges park and, and so forth, so.
Okay. Well, that would have to come back to us.
That'll have to come back as a, uh, ordinance amendment.
Alright, are we agreeable to at least bring that back to us? Alright, anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Alright, county administrator report. You mentioned there might be another meeting. Hopefully, we've avoided that.
Well, we'll get to that. I have two things. Uh, one is more of an FYI. The other one is, uh, a piggyback of what Mr. Johnson talked about with smart scale, which may or may not need a meeting. So the first thing I'll talk about is dog tags, a lot of everybody's favorite subject. This is kind of a FYI. Um, Ms. Snow or treasurer or myself were approached by, uh, the town manager, I think, late last week. And, you know, the timing is not ideal at all. And we were informed that the town did not budget and did not intend to, uh, process and provide dog tags for their citizens out of town hall, starting in July. And they were gonna ask us to do that for them, which, you know, in theory, what, isn't necessarily a bad thing. And myself and Mr. Warner talked about that probably six months ago or so. And I think from the reversion situation, that is something that we do need to probably look at, and it's, might be appropriate. But doing it in two weeks' notice, um, may not be appropriate. So, uh, you know, I talked with Ms. Snow a little bit, you know, we, we didn't budget for this. And we didn't budget for extra dog tags and all the office supplies that are associated with all the copies and everything else we have to do. You know, I don't, she's a little bit, she's a little concerned as to what staff, which staff member is gonna be absorbing these extra duties. We don't, it'd be ideal to do this whenever we're starting to sell our new round of tags in November. I mean, not in the middle of a year, uh, which is a little strange as well. So anyways, where, where we're going with that, also, there's some inconsistencies, and Patrick will remember this, with our, uh, license ordinances, where we now do the lifetime dog tags in the town. At that time, before they asked us to do this, I chose not to do that yet. It would be ideal, again, to have that synergized, uh, so we're, again, for ease of administration, uh, that would be nice as well. So anyways, we're gonna, myself and Ms. Snow are gonna meet with the town administration, um, I think Wednesday, and, uh, talk to them about this and really, uh, try to implore them to delay this request. I know we're, even though they claim they did not budget for this expense. I mean, it's just, uh, it, it's a little unseemly to dump this on us and with a week or two weeks' notice. So, so again, my approach is gonna be, you know, let's work towards this transition, but we can't do it in two weeks. Well, at this point, a week and a half.
I would, I would agree with you, and I would also say that if they want us to administer, say, starting in November or whatever it is, that they're gonna have to adopt an ordinance that corresponds to ours, so that it can be one and done with the lifetime one, um, rather than our staff having to, well, this is in the town, this is in the county, and, and, and doing different types of tags. So that would not be appropriate, to put that additional burden on our staff.
What is the reasoning? Why do they?
I, I.
Did I miss that part?
No.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like this is.
I don't, I don't have that information.
I mean, this is years after reversion. Why is this coming up now?
Uh, I, I would love to answer that question, but I don't have that information. So that's be part of the, that's gonna be part of the, uh, the conversation, I guess.
Wouldn't lie to the fact that they just gave all their employees raises and bonuses. You'd think that they could handily handle this.
Yeah, you would think. I'm sure they have the resources to cover it, so they can figure it out in the time.
So anyways, I, I just wanted to let you know for, so if we're talking about our neighboring government, you know, this is a conversation that's gonna be taking place, and for political purposes, you all need to know.
Okay.
And that's the approach that we're taking.
I'm not gonna vote you the dog. I'm not going to vote you the dog catcher.
Anything else?
The other thing is the piggyback on what Mr. Johnson reported about smart scale, and this is where we do need to talk about, do we want a meeting or not have a meeting, is I had a conference call this afternoon with our VDOT representatives and, and yes, we did have all of our applicant, all of our applications move forward to the next stage other than the Teeters Chapel project. So the one, just a reminder, the ones that did remove, should have removed, moved to the next stage are the sidewalk project along Forest Road that, I'll go into, I think we may remember that, the intersection improvements on Route 122 and Route 24, that intersection improvements there, the improvements at the intersection Timber Ridge Road and 460, also intersection improvements at Blackwater Road and 460. And then the final one is a big one at the intersection of New London, Route 11 and 460. So the thing is, is that...
Eight eleven.
Yeah, eight eleven, not four eleven, yeah, eight eleven. So the deadline to pin in our final smart scale, and I kind of got behind the curve here, so it was kind of my fault for not thinking about this ahead of time, is the deadline for the final application for smart scale is August 3rd and therefore in our July 27th meeting, we'll have resolutions in our board meeting to officially apply. However, the one thing that does need to take place between now and when we apply is we need to have some sort of, I mean, it doesn't have to be real formal, but we need to have some sort of public, document some sort of public input process of some sort. I mean, even if it's just meeting with, like, at Blackwater Road and 460, the public input process, we mostly go into meeting with Owens at Owens Market and talk about what the changes are going to be and the custom truck folks and what that is going to look like and are they just going to work for their businesses.
How many, how many of those meetings are you recommending?
Well, what I'm getting at is kind of where does comfort level of the board be?
You can't do it in the form of a public hearing at the meeting on the 27th?
No.
The 27th, so...
We wouldn't want to do that. We, we'd really want to have some of these either be kind of town halls or sort of individual, really for, for the application, we just have to document that we had some sort of public discussion, for lack of a better word.
Could take all night long.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a public hearing necessarily, it's just whatever we want to make it to be, we just have to document that we had some sort of conversations. The, the reason is, is that if we had a project that was approved and we didn't have any conversations with anybody in the public, well, you know, that could pose a problem down the road because people may not know what's coming. The reason I was, the reason I was kind of teasing about the meeting, and I may not teasing, but thinking about the meeting, is there, there have been some substantial design changes to some of these applications, so these were pre-applications that were submitted and we've had some significant design changes. And my thought is, is that before we go talking to public folks about what these designs might be and some of them may enjoy them, some may not so much enjoy them, I'd rather, I'd like to err on the side of caution of giving the boards kind of nodding their head and saying, hey, these designs make sense and, and we'd like to have you go ahead and have those conversations versus the opposite of me going out there and, not me, but us going out there and having these meetings and conversations without the board having any input into what the, what that preliminary design might look like.
Can't we do that in the upcoming work session?
We could, I mean, it, it's going to, it's going to create a little bit of a backlog, but we could. It's July 13th is the work session, it'll give us a couple of weeks in order to have some public input opportunities.
Well, what if you, I guess, I mean, if you think about it from a citizen input perspective, I have no problem with getting the public input, I mean, we're, we're either going to, it sounds like the options, if they've been changed, the options for us are either to pull it or go with what's, what the design is.
That's right.
So we're not going to have design options, right? And so, seems to me, you know, we can pull it on the 27th, right? So I'd say let's get the public input and if the public seems agreeable to it, then we have that information when we get to our meeting on 27th versus, and then if, if we just say, you know what, we really don't like this, then we can always say no and, and pull it. But if we don't have the option to change it anyway, I don't really need, know why we, I mean, it's either pull it, pull it now or pull it later, but...
And we can always have, like Mr. Scott suggested, I can always have our VDOT folks come on July 13th and just go over any details and it could be a pretty quick work session.
But if, but if you want to go ahead and get started with public input, I, I'd say go ahead and get started.
And the reason I'm not trying to call it a problem, the reason I ask, I've just worked for other jurisdictions and sometimes boards are sensitive about, we want to make a decision first before public input, and then I've worked for other places where they say we want public input first before we make a decision.
And normally I would say I would prefer to have some input, but in this case, given the time constraints and the requirement to have the public input in order to be able to meet the requirements for the application, let's get that public input started. That would be my, my position because without it, you cannot apply.
That's right. Well, we would just be totally non-competitive and it wouldn't be worth the paper we're putting it on.
So let's get that started and then if we get to the work session and decide, you know what, we don't really like these, we can always pull it. But I mean, I'm familiar with some of them already, so.
I have a question, wasn't one of those, the list you just gave us, wasn't one of those Valley View, the road that's in your, in your district, wasn't that a smart scale project?
No, not, if it was, it wasn't...
That's a different...
What? As a revenue share.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's going forward, right? Actually, it's not in my district, it's actually in yours.
It's my district, okay, it's right on that line, real close.
Yeah, yeah, it's on that side of Waterway.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on the other side.
Well, in the meantime, what I'll do is, and this will not be a meeting or a vote, they specify that, I will send out some preliminary spec sheets just so you can see what these intersections will look like because they have, some of them have changed.
Yeah, the one that I wasn't terribly thrilled about was the 460 eight eleven one.
And it's still the way you saw before. You know what it is.
Yeah, it's like insane.
Big diversion, diamond.
I did talk actually to folks...
I don't think the public's going to like it either.
Who own property at the golf course near that eight eleven, four sixty about it. So, so public has been alerted.
But, you know, that one, I, I didn't like it, I don't think anybody's going to like it, but, you know, I don't work for VDOT, so.
That's right.
I don't even like what they did at Parable Road and Corporate Park Drive, I don't even like that, but...
Well, and, yeah, of course.
I understand...
Several of us weren't here for the design of that, but now that, now that it's in, I'm kind of scratching my head too, saying I'm not quite exactly sure what we're doing.
Well, they just prevented the left turn out of Corporate Park, but they also prevented my left turn to go into the credit union.
Yeah.
So now I got to go down the road and take a U-turn.
True, it's nasty.
So, anyway.
Takes 10 seconds longer.
It's ridiculous.
So, I hear, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to get out of front of the board because sometimes that can be not a good place for a county administrator to be. I just, so I appreciate that input, but, so that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sheriff.
Yes. Sheriff, make your way, we adjourn.
Wait a minute. I asked first.
I think Mr. Davis just...
I said, Mr. Sheriff.
You did ask.
I'm putting my hat on.
I can't say my dish.
Mr. Scott?
Oh, my bad.
All right, all right, there's a motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We return.
There you go. Patrick?
Bridget, we have this paper for you.